Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council. I call the meeting to order. First off, we have the open forum. And for tonight, we have Mr. John B. Osted. Would you please come forward?
John B. Osted, 7016 Harriet Avenue. Tonight, though, I'm here for the Richfield History Center. And what I'd like to do tonight is invite everyone to a new informational series that we're going to start. It's going to be held at the Richfield History Center. The first one is on Tuesday, September 13, at 7:00 at night. We're calling this series "This Old Bartholomew House."
That's great.
We recently finished a historic structures report about the Riley-Bartholomew House. And this house, you know, was built in 1852. So we have lots of things that we now want to share if you're interested in Richfield history. We also recently got ahold of a complete genealogy of the Bartholomew family, and we will share things from that as we go. Now, the Richfield History Center is located at 6901 Lyndale Avenue South. It's right next to the oldest house in Richfield, the Riley-Bartholomew House. I'm going to be your presenter for this bi-monthly series. Meetings are free. They're going to run about an hour. I'll have coffee and cookies on, so even if you don't like history, come and have a cup of coffee. So come on over on Tuesday, September 13, at 7:00, to the Richfield History Center and learn all about Richfield history. Thanks.
I have a question. Will those cookies be snickerdoodles?
They can be, yes.
Thank you.
I'll put it in order.
Good, thank you. Well, it's my favorite. I can't help it.
Okay. Can we all join us? Would you please stand and join us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in its own with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. At this time, I ask the approval of the minutes of the special City Council work session of July 22, 2016, the special City Council meeting of July 26, 2016, the regular City Council meeting of July 26, 2016, and the special City Council meeting of August 12, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Councilmember Fitz Henry, you up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have the opportunity to go ahead and welcome Brian Ricks. He was just appointed the Executive Director of the Metropolitan Airports Commission. He's also with Lisa Palin, who's our Commissioner. And Brian, if you want to step up the podium and tell us all about yourself. I understand you're a Richfield resident?
Soon.
Soon?
Soon, yes.
Well, welcome to Richfield.
Oh, wow.
Yes, yeah. Love it.
Thank you, Councilor, and, uh, fair. Glad to be here this evening. We appreciate the opportunity. As mentioned, Commissioner Palin is with me. And on behalf of the entire Metropolitan Airports Commission, again, it's great to be here. A little bit about me. I've been on the job now exactly three months. I started May 23rd, so it's off and running. We've been doing a fair amount of introductions in different areas with different city councils and different groups. So thank you again for the opportunity. I've been in the industry about 31 years. I actually started as an intern at the Metropolitan Airports Commission and then started working there. Was there from about '85 to 1990 as supervising the noise monitoring program there when they used to go out in vans and to different locations. And so I'm very versed with the noise issue. From Minneapolis, I went on to Denver. At the time, Denver had just broken ground on the new Denver Airport project. And I remember going out there and seeing Ames Construction out of Burnsville moving material back and forth across the desert prairie on that 53-square-mile site. And being out there six years, I actually managed the program to install an aircraft noise and operations monitoring system with, I think, about 30 remote monitoring sites, very similar to the system here that monitors and tracks every aircraft that comes into the airspace. So from there, I went to a number of airports and Aberdeen, South Dakota, St. Cloud, Minnesota, Duluth. I was in Duluth for 10 years. And then most recently, went on to Grand Rapids, Michigan, where I was the Executive Director there. So it's great to be back. It's great to be back home. I grew up in Lakeville, and will be moving to Richfield and looking forward to that in about another, just over a month. I want to say that we are committed to continuing to, with public outreach. We are doing some things at the Commission right now to enhance our public outreach capabilities. You'll be hearing more about that. I think we talked a little bit about that at the NOC meeting. I want to thank you also, Councilor Fitz Henry, for your involvement in that and your leadership there. That is critically important to our operation and our ongoing communication. It's not, you know, a couple of things. I think MAC has one of the most aggressive, if not the most aggressive, noise monitoring programs and mitigation programs in the country, having spent over $500 million on noise mitigation. And it's also a very collaborative, as you know, a very collaborative environment and involving the, obviously, the surrounding communities, the FAA, the airlines, and the MAC as a, all critical pieces of that. And we need to keep that communication going, and I'll commit to you that we will. And we'll continue that outreach and even improve on that outreach in any areas that we can. So again, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. I look forward to getting to know all of you more as time goes by. And if there's ever an opportunity where you'd like me to come back and present, either at this session or any other session, please do not hesitate to let me know. I'm happy to do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mitch. And I'd just like to make some comments, too, about the NOC. We had several meetings, me and the City Manager and Pam Demetrichko, about the convergent runway operations, which we commented about the early turns in it. And I want to say the MAC Environmental Group has been very supportive of us, helping us. And I do say that we do still have a good relationship with the FAA and that the NOC committee members and what we do there is really a blessing because a lot of other areas in the country, the airports, don't listen to the citizens. And we all know the FAA can pretty much do what they wish once they pass the regulation. But in this case, the FAA actually does listen to us. So we'll be working with them. We've got a little more work to do on this convergent runway operations and see how that turns out. But they've been very receptive on helping us do the right thing, so appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight and introducing yourself. I appreciate it. Thank you, Lisa, for coming as well. Appreciate you coming. We have a presentation of the Richfield Bloomer Awards. This is going to be Susan Rosenberg and Mary Olafson, and they have a PowerPoint, and I can't wait to see. I got to sign the certificate so I know who won. They all were beautiful gardens, though. I was at one of them for that day, too, so.
Well, thank you for allowing us to come to talk a lot about gardens tonight because we're pretty excited. The Richfield Beautiful Garden for 2016 was one of the, was the most successful in the 13 years that we've been doing that. In fact, one gardener counted 150 participants, another one counted 135. So we know that it was really a successful one. Mary and I loved doing this garden tour, but this year was really special because of all the great help we have. Last winter, Mary and I went to Kate Atchison and Julie Urban at the Community Development Department and pitched the idea of combining the Richfield Beautiful Garden Tour with the Richfield and Bloom Landscape Awards. They went for it. And a new program was created. After all the nominations were in and the finalists were selected, we had 10 gorgeous gardens to be on our tour. So we want to thank Julie and Kate because they were so great to work with. We also want to thank our sponsors this year. We had Steve Sheenberger, Lisa and Dave Hintermeister, and Wagner Nurseries. Steve, Lisa, and Dave provided water stops at two of our gardens with, and also gift cards. And Wagner's also provided gift cards for us, for the prizes. We had some really great volunteers, too, this year that really helped make the day. Mayor Debbie Gotel was at a site, councilmembers Pat Elliott and Edwina Garcia, Maria Reagan-Gonzalez, Lisa Rudolph, and then we had garden club members Joan Kraft and Patricia Loman. And they just kind of helped the people through the voting process that went on during that. Now, with Julie's help, we're on with the show, and we're going to talk about our gardens for 2016 and the People's Choice Award winner. Are we at, are you going to, is the pictures up? Okay. Yeah, these were all the way there. Okay, the first one was Darlene and Tom Lund at 6633 Vincent Avenue. This garden is like walking in a wooded area, far from the city. The use of antique farming implements added touches in bringing welcome surprises as the tour this incredible property. And if you went through there, you thought you were in a park. You did not know that you were in the city of Richfield. Number two was Pat Hattigan at 6438 Thomas. If you like container gardening, this garden was for you. Bright colors abound in this attractive corner lot, but watch out, there may be a fairy or two sneaking up on you in the garden. And Pat could not be here with us tonight. The next garden is Mary Shannon at 7036 Logan Avenue. Colors, textures, and the sound of water falling was pure magic. And don't miss this outstanding property, and you come away with tons of ideas because Mary really designed her garden that had, and had really nice ideas on what you could do in your own yard. The next one was Bob and Mary Druke at 7021 James. And this garden was very particular because if shade was an issue for you, this gardener had the answers. And his property was filled with hostas, impatience, and other shade-loving plants, all blended into a symphony of splendor all around you. The next one was Michael and Glynnis Mackey at 6340 Irving. And the words just really can't describe this yard. And only way to believe it was to experience it because of all the water features, the koi pond, and plants that made this garden so wonderful. And I'm sure the mayor can tell you that she was at that garden. The next garden was Marshall and Sue Morris at 7301 Colfax. This bark backyard is an oasis for the owners with a deck overlooking a koi pond surrounded by immaculate gardens filled with plants that span the seasons. The next one is Chris and Phil McWilliams at 6714 First Avenue South. And this is a garden, and I said, "Do you want curb appeal?" This gorgeous property has so many surprises and fantastic touches that you'll just want to stay and linger there. And in fact, Chris told us about her neighbors who like to come and just sit and enjoy her garden. And Edwina can tell that one, too. That was really special. Tensent espac and Sonum Dalma at 7625 Oakland. These gardeners have mastered the art of year-round plantings that provide color and interest to the neighborhood. This garden is a picture of charm and obvious love. These people garden year-round, and they're known in the neighborhood, and people, it's a photo stop for the neighborhood. Next garden is Judy Ahm, 7514 11th Avenue South. Do you love flowers en masse? Do you like little surprises at every turn? This garden is for you because this gardener likes lights, music, and bubble machines. And you just come in to enjoy. And the last one is La Santa Fernando at 6632 17th Avenue South. And its color, texture, variety, this garden has it all. And it is done with a master's loving touch that will amaze and delight you. And every single one of them are winners. It was really hard. So many of the people that came through the garden just came up to me and said, "What do you mean, vote for one?" No one could, they really had a hard time. But we do have a winner. And that is La Santa Fernando at 6632 17th Avenue South.
All right.
So they would stand up. Stand up, Fernando, so they know.
Yes, yes. Let's see that gardener.
Woo-hoo, yes, yeah. It was a really hard choice, and so many of our people that came through said, "I just couldn't decide." So a lot of them voted, some of them voted for every single garden. Anyway, thank you all for so much, my volunteers, the sponsors. And Mary and I just think this is a privilege to be able to do this for the city every year. It's a gift that, it just is, means so much. So thanks again. You'll see us next year. We'll be right back. Thanks. Thank you.
You know, Susan, I wanted to thank, like, the folks that won the award. They served cookies and soda pop and water. And believe me, as you're trekking to all of these, it's really nice to have someone, you know, actually be really good hosts themselves.
Well, that's why we had two water stops, too. And Steve and Lisa were really kind in sponsoring those because it did make a difference because it was a warm day. And it really added to the whole experience, so we, it just, it just made it, everything was so much better. And thanks to this lady here and Kate.
We know, and so many times what we're doing is we're actually having to respond to the problems that we, our challenges in Richfield. And this is such a positive outlook of our whole city. This is, this is the other side of our city that people get to see. So thank you for doing that.
Well, if you remember, back in '03, we were going through some troubles with, some of the controversy with Best Buy and some of the other things going on. We were looking for something to do to really do the exact thing, really advertise and talk about the positive side of Richfield. And this garden tour kind of grew out of that. I had a conversation with the then-City Manager, and I went to the garden club, and I got a best friend out of it from Mary. And then, but I also, we really did promote the city with this, so. And we don't, Mary and I don't intend to stop.
Okay.
So we'll be back.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Real quick, I don't know if we said Pat Elliott helped out with our group, too.
Oh, I know he did.
I might have missed Pat. Sorry about that.
I thought I said Pat. Maybe I didn't.
Oh, you did.
Did I say you, Pat? But I appreciate it. You were there with Mary Shannon. I know that. All right. Thank you, guys. Thanks. We're going to move on to hats off to hometown hits. I will start with Edwina Garcia.
Thank you, Mayor.
Wait for the folks to clear out a bit here.
We'll wait for the folks to clear out.
Thank you, all you lovely gardeners. Thank you. We appreciate you. It's lovely to drive by your homes.
I want to mention the fact that we had one of our own who passed away, and that happened September, no, I'm not sure when it happened, August the 18th. And, you know, this, this was a city employee, Robert Hingen, and he was really beloved by all who worked with him. The city tends to have very close-knit relationships, you know, all together, and it's kind of like a work family. And I know that they will truly miss him. He was a great guy. He took a lot of pride in his work. He was, you know, really dedicated city staff person, and we really appreciate his service of 20 years to the city. He is survived by his wife and two children and his mother. And on behalf of the City Council and city staff, we offer our deepest condolences to his family and know that they were, they will continue to be in our thoughts and our prayers.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, that, that was it.
Okay. Councilmember Elliott? I know, sad news to have to follow.
Yeah, yeah. It, I know that, that just being around some of the staff and everything after he'd passed, you could see it in their face, and you could see the sour and the pain. And I think that's a testament to him above and beyond a lot of the things that, you know, when you see it in somebody's eyes, you know how loved and how much he meant to the family here that we all know is Richfield, so.
Okay.
Once again, wonderful eulogy, Edwina, and condolences. Onto another matter that involves Richfield and the heart of the city is we're coming up on the eighth anniversary of the Penn Fest in the open streets. I'm announcing it tonight. I'm going to give everybody four weeks to get ready to go and enjoy all the amenities. And at the same time, if you have a little extra time, volunteer because we always need volunteers to assist and help with traffic control and getting the pedestrians and everything up and down the street. It's on Sunday, September 18, and begins at noon to 4:00 p.m. Penn Avenue will be closed from Crosstown to 76th Street. I think for the last three or four years, every time I've been there, you know, we started with, with large numbers and it increasingly grows. And it's, when you stand on top of the hill up by Lund's, looking, looking south down Penn Avenue, it's not unlike being at the fairgrounds and looking down on Labor Day when you see about 150,000 people. Obviously, I'm exaggerating the numbers a little bit, but it's incredible how many people show up and have a great time. Some of the amenities include, there's live music, food trucks, free activities, there's a car show, BMX demos. And if you haven't seen that, it's an incredible display of aerials on bicycles. And, you know, I used to be somewhat of a daredevil when I was a kid, but I never even imagined some of the things these kids can do on bicycles these days. And I, you know, I caused my mom's heart attack many times, but if she ever saw me doing any of these things, I'm not sure she would have survived as long as she did. We have a crafters fair, a pet zone, and you can walk, skate, run, ride, just wander up and down the street, meet your neighbors, meet the people that are coming to visit, visit the food trucks, visit the local restaurants. Everybody's outside, everybody's having a great time. And once again, volunteers are always needed, and if you're interested, call 612-861-9361. Hope to see you all there. And I'll be announcing this again in a couple of weeks, so don't get tired of it.
Edwina?
I just wanted to, you know, when John B. Osted was here, and I mentioned the cookies, the thing is, is that, you know, we're very good friends. And when I go over and we have coffee, you know, his wife makes all kinds of bars and little cakes and cookies and, and, you know, she knows that I like snickerdoodles, so whenever I leave, I just, I just empty those snickerdoodles in the plastic bag and take them home. I mean, they're fantastic. It's just my favorite, and I, I didn't mean to, you know, to just say, you know.
Quid pro quo.
We all know each other too well around here.
Just wondering.
Yeah, yeah. Councilmember Howard?
I was just going to, it's been a while since we've been together, so we missed our official meeting last Tuesday, so I wanted to mention a successful Night to Unite, which I think we had over 160 neighborhood parties. And I really want to thank our police officers and city staff and a big showing. I think that we got to basically every one of the parties. And most importantly, I want to thank the people, the neighborhood leaders and folks that hosted those parties. Good times were had, and it's very good to see neighborhoods coming together. And that's just something to build on. And I, I've got my bag of goodies I still need to drop off. The, I can say that the, the police wristbands were a hit with the kids. We have a few extras, so I'll drop those off the chief.
I'll like them again. Councilmember?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I loved Night to Unite, too. As you know, it's probably going to be my last time I'm zooming around on the motorcycle on that, so I had a great time. Except next year, I really will stop for all them beers they offered.
Oh, yeah. I know.
I couldn't accept a ride in that police motorcycle. And the other thing I wanted to mention is the marathon was fantastic this year. Great turnout. We had great weather, great runners, and it seems to get bigger and bigger every year. I think, well, this is number 14, I think. So we've been doing it a lot of years, and it's getting real popular. And that's probably something I won't be doing again next year. Matt Steen rode with me this year, so he's got the course figured out, chief, so he'll know how to do that, so. And then the other one coming up is I'll be doing the Penn Fest escort for the runners there and hopefully the Kitty Parade if I find them this year. They kind of got disorganized this year, so I'm looking forward to that before I put the bike away, so.
Okay. Wow. Well, we always look forward to seeing you there, too. Yeah, I was out around at Night to Unite, too, and it was a good night. It was a good evening. But also this weekend, I was over at the House of Pear. They have a children's festival that I was going to, and it actually had all kinds of things geared to kids, and they had an ice cream truck there, which was really fun. Do you know we have an ice cream truck running around in Richfield? Isn't that wonderful? I love it. I don't know what the route is, but this one was one of the Minneapolis guys who came down. But that was fun, and fire and police were there, and they had a jumpy house, and they were giving away prizes. And they had homemade tamales. And so that was, it was a lot of fun. But I want to encourage organizations that have these kinds of things around the community to come bring them. I didn't get to announce this before it happened because we didn't know about it until after the council meetings. And so I want to encourage those community events, please get it into an email, drop it off, and a note on me to ask me to mention it before it happens. On the council, somebody will take it on. We want people to go to your community events, and we want them to know. And I think if we, if there'd been more knowledge about, there was, it was pretty well-attended, there would be more people out. And I would like to see people going to our, our churches will start up their festivals soon, and that's always a blast, and that's a lot of fun. And you don't have to cook if you go there. That's how I look at it. I don't cook, do I? Just go out and visit with everybody, and I don't cook, so please come to us.
Can we add something, Mayor?
Please.
Almost forgot, we, for the band shelter, I don't know if you know, Planning Commission requested that they do some sort of noise monitoring. And what we did is we, me and Mike Howard had met with Jim Topitzofur, and they got some bids and that, just to let people out there know that they are going ahead with the noise monitoring. They will allow the public to view when it does happen and that, and they'll be posting that later. So that is moving forward, that there will be an actual study done on the noise emitted from the band shelter, and there'll be opportunity for the public to witness that.
Okay, great.
The only thing I'd add there is part of that, they're going to monitor some noise from other bandshelters to see if we can learn from those as well. And I think the, the product should be some good guidance as we move forward, so.
Good. Excellent. Thanks for the hard work. Thanks for taking that on you, too. Appreciate it. I might ask for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have the consent calendar. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the City Council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on those items is necessary. Tonight, we have several items, starting off with Item A, consideration of the approval of a resolution amending Appendix D of the Richfield City Code to provide for a license fee reduction for residential kennel licenses from $164 to $100 annually. Item B is consideration of the approval of a work proposal from Bolton &amp; Menck Incorporated for final design and coordination services of the 66th Street landscape project between Exerxes Avenue and 16th Avenue. Item C, consideration of the approval of resolution certifying deferral of special assessments for certain eligible homeowners. Item D is consideration of the approval of a resolution appointing Devon Macadia to the Richfield Tourism Promotion Board to complete a three-year term ending December 31, 2018, or until his successor has been chosen, whichever's later. Item E is consideration of the approval of a work proposal from Kim Lee Horn &amp; Associates Incorporated for additional construction and design engineering services for Portland Avenue between 67th and 78th Streets. Item F, consideration of the approval of a reappointment of the firm of Bergen ADV as the city's auditors for the financial reporting fiscal years 2016 through 2018, and to authorize the City Manager and the Mayor to execute an agreement for those services. Item G, consideration of the approval of the second reading of an ordinance changing Section 705-19, 715-15, 825-11, and 910-23 of the Richfield City Code pertaining to the timing of special assessment procedure. And finally, Item H, consideration of the approval of a request for a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for the Richfield Minneapolis American Legion Post 435 located at 6501 Portland Avenue South for a flag ceremony and a barbecue event scheduled to take place on September 17, 2016. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, I just wanted to say that we need to go back to the, to the, to the, to the board. I think we've, 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 we've,
You know, when, we have a lot of pets and when you have a pet and they're expensive to take care of and feed and what have you, so I appreciate that the city made that reduction happen.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Fitz Henry, you have the first item there.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. The item for discussion is a public hearing to consider preliminary plot and amended development plans for the Cedar Point Commons area at 66 and Richfield Parkway. The proposal includes revision to the vacant site west of Richfield Parkway and to the pad on the far east edge of the development along Highway 77. Final development plans for the Cedar Point Commons were approved by the city council on June 27th, 2006. The nearly 30-acre development included the existing Target, Home Depot, TCF, and inline shops as well as future restaurant sites at the southwest corner of the development and space for additional retail on the vacant lots across Richfield Parkway. For many years, the market conditions were not strong enough to develop these sites. In December 2015, Hempel Companies, the developer, purchased the vacant lots on either side of the development along the existing inline retail buildings from Ryan Companies. On February 9th, 2016, the developer attended a joint work session of the city council, planning commission, and housing and redevelopment authority to provide a general update of the additions and improvements. They were contemplating for the property. The current proposal includes the addition of retail and restaurant space along 66th Street and a preliminary layout for a daycare on the northern half of the vacant lots west of Richfield Parkway. The developer is asking for final approvals for the retail restaurant buildings and preliminary approval for the daycare facility. If approved by the council, the final approval of the daycare building could be issued administratively through a minor amendment process. Before we open the meeting, I guess I'll let John Starks put out the information there so people that might have questions can maybe get it answered before they come up and comment. So, Mr. Starks, if you would, take the floor.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. Really, we're talking about three kind of pods of development to the east of the existing development. So that'd be to the east of where the Chipotle lies. There'd be a building including two quick service restaurants and a small center tenant space. The quick service restaurants would be Five Guys Burger Place and then Cafe Zupas, which I believe is a Mediterranean chain. The building incorporates the very similar architectural elements to the existing inline shops. We do feel at the staff level that it significantly improves the southern facade. It adds windows, awnings, and inviting pedestrian access to the back of the building. I will say, the back of that building, staff was not as insistent that there be functional doors on the back of that particular building. When you go out to the site, the doors really don't go anywhere. There's some grade issues. It didn't seem to make sense. The second building is across Richfield Parkway from the Caribou and that again would be a multi-tenant retail and restaurant building. The, somewhere I think I had the tenants, but two restaurants, one on either end of the building and a central retail space. Again, the building mimics many of the architectural elements of the existing development, but it does again improve on the southern facade and focuses more on pedestrian access. Pedestrian bicycle access is being of particular importance for the site, which is adjacent to both the Three Rivers Park Trail and a heavily used transit stop. Functional doors will be provided along 66th Street and sidewalks will be adjusted from the attached plans in order to provide direct access to the tenant doors. And then finally, the daycare facility at the north end of this western property would serve up to 180 children. The particular user, and I will note that the developer Hempel is here and they could probably provide more information than I can. We don't have the name of the particular user in the staff report, but I'm familiar with it and we did look it up online. It's a very high end, I would say, for a daycare kind of a facility. Staff believes that this use provides a nice transition from the residential area plan to the north and to the existing residential to the west and to the, between that and the retail. You know, we go through a number of standards in the zoning code. The short story is we feel like the standards are met and staff is recommending approval.
Did the developer want to comment before we open the public meeting? Okay. Then, Madam Mayor, request that we open in a public hearing?
The public hearing is open. Would anyone like to come forward to comment on this project or ask a question? The public hearing is open. Would anyone like to come to speak at the podium?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor of closing the public hearing signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. The public hearing is closed.
Okay, then I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve and amend planned unit development, conditional use permit, and final development plan for Cedar Point Commons at 66th Street and Richfield Parkway and approve a preliminary plot for the properties west of Richfield Parkway.
Any discussion? Councilmember?
More a comment.
Please.
I take exception to Mr. Starks characterizing Five Guys as a burger place when everybody knows with taste that they, the split franks grilled in a hot dog bun are what people go there for. It's not the burgers.
You know.
Yeah, now, I just want to make sure that's on the record, okay?
I would say it's bad form for staff to sit at the dais and argue with a council member. I think it's the fries.
Well, okay, we all have our favorites. I just, I had a vote for the split hot dogs.
I just want to comment because I had coffee this morning with the folks there and I want to say that, you know, although we're hoping for a sit-down restaurant on the pad, fast casual seems to be one of the big things that people like. But it wasn't the same old, same old. You brought in some new things and you brought in some stuff that's not in Richfield. Thank you for, I know you're working hard on this and I know we still may somewhere around that area get something in there that's really nice. So I know you'll keep working on that for us and I appreciate everything that you have done. And you aggressively went after this once you purchased this property and got going on it. And I look forward to seeing it completed. And I can't wait because when you get those residents over there from the Anderson Project to the Boy Claire, those businesses are just going to hum. So I really think that that's, you've done a great job. So thank you for your hard work and appreciate it.
Just one quick question. It's my recollection that the last time we're together, was the daycare center, they're going to be a Primrose? That's what I thought. That is a well-known, good, good daycare center, so.
Yeah. Okay. Well, all those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming here this evening. Appreciate you being here. Councilmember Howard, you have the next item.
I have consideration of an amendment to the city's zoning ordinance and a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance. The proposed ordinance allows the city to opt out of recently adopted legislation related to temporary healthcare dwellings. So this is related to legislation allowing certain types of recreational vehicles to be used as temporary family dwellings. There was legislation signed into law in May of this year around these temporary family dwellings. The stated purpose of the law is to provide transitional housing for seniors, although the law does not limit the housing to seniors, but rather allows anyone in need of assistance with two or more instrumental activities of daily life to be housed in this manner. The law creates a new type of permit, a temporary conditional use permit, that allows this type of housing for up to six months with an option to extend the permit by an additional six months. The law gives cities only 15 days to make a decision on granting the permit as opposed to the typical 60 days. The League of Minnesota Cities and city staff opposed this legislation for a number of reasons. Cities should be allowed to make decisions related to density and accessory dwelling units and structures at the local level. The varied characteristics of cities make it inappropriate to adopt this one-size-fits-all model. The city of Richfield allows accessory dwelling units in a variety of forms. Individuals wishing to accommodate an aging senior have a legal city sanctioned way to do so already. Adopted legislation allows for only one occupant of the temporary healthcare dwelling unit. It seems unsafe and inconsistent with an urgent need for temporary housing to place a person with medical and or physical impairments alone in a housing unit. Minnesota winter conditions could also pose a threat here. The combination of an accessory dwelling unit plus a temporary family healthcare dwelling on Richfield lots would create overcrowding issues that could be detrimental to the surrounding neighborhood. The adopted permit process puts city staff in the place of having to request medical and legal documents. The city of Richfield does not want to be in this position and, as mentioned already, the adopted timeline is far too short. As a result of this opposition, the adopted bill does allow cities to opt out of this legislation. Unless cities choose not to participate by passing an opt-out ordinance, the law requires cities to start issuing permits for temporary dwellings on September 1st. The League has drafted the attached model ordinance to assist cities in this process. It is the opinion of city staff and legal council that the council should adopt the attached ordinance opting out of these requirements. Staff believes that adequate provisions to allow for both temporary and long-term assistance for family members with health issues already exist in our current ordinances. And so the motion here is to, one, approve the ordinance opting out of the requirements of Minnesota statutes, Section 462 dot 3593, and to approve the resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending subsection 509 dot 09 related to accessory buildings.
I'll second. Discussion?
Since Mr. Starks there, have we had anybody request such a thing in all your years here?
Not something that this would address. You know, the way I look at this, this is a solution to, A, a problem that we may not have, and B, if we did have the problem, we've found so many different ways of addressing it. You know, this is really for small communities in Minnesota that don't have the sophistication to find their own solutions with us allowing temporary, you know, we allow what are commonly called granny flats already. And so we've found solutions. And even with having changed our code to allow the granny flats several years ago, I don't believe that any have been built.
Okay, thank you for that comment.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Elliott?
Thank you, Mayor. This item calls for the consideration of an ordinance amending the city's zoning ordinance and a resolution authorizing summary publication of said ordinance. The proposed ordinance updates and clarifies the city's telecommunications regulations. On September 8th, 2015, the city council adopted a one-year moratorium on the consideration of wireless telecommunications facilities and antennas in city, county, and state right-of-ways throughout the city. This moratorium was in response to inquiries about a new small cell technology. The city had been approached by a company named Mobileite? Mobilete?
Mobility.
Mobility, who was looking to install six new utility poles for small cell packages within the city right-of-way. City staff believes that it is important to provide wireless communication access to the public. City staff also believes that it is possible to do so with fair and balanced regulations related to sighting, screening, and operation of the wireless communications facilities. The proposed ordinance updates a number of definitions in the Purpose and Intent section. It also strikes language related to co-location in the public right-of-way. This language is proposed to remove because the zoning ordinance is not intended to regulate the initial permitting and placement of structures within the public right-of-way. Section 802 of the city code addresses right-of-way management and includes the city's policies relating to permitting, placement, undergrounding, et cetera. In addition to providing time for staff to review existing ordinances, the moratorium period allowed time for the city attorney and the Minnesota Department of Commerce to evaluate Mobility's claims that it was exempt from local government regulation. Both have found that this is not the case, that Mobility does not meet the definition of a telecommunications right-of-way user as defined by Minnesota statute, Section 237.162 subdivision 4, and therefore does not have a right under law, franchise, or ordinance to use the public right-of-way. Mobility is free to apply for right-of-way permits through the city's regular city process. At this time, I would move to approve the ordinance amending subsection 544.25 of the city code related to telecommunications towers and antennas and approve the resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending subsection 544.25 of the city code related to telecommunications tower and antennas.
Second?
Any discussion? Comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Great. City managers report.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, I really don't have anything really to report. The things we're working on are still in progress and I don't have any, you know, any definite news to give you on some of those things.
So we don't have anything back from M.D.?
No.
Okay. Right. I'm sure you'll tell us as soon as we do.
So I will. Yeah, I'll keep you up to date. The things I'm really watching are, you know, where we're at with Portland Avenue, when I get a better idea when that's going to be done. And obviously, the biggest issue for me to follow all the time is the underpass.
Yep.
Those kinds of things.
Okay. All right. Thanks, appreciate that. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Claims and payroll. Seeing no further actions here, I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for coming.